Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good, thank you. Alex, I actually had a question for you before we begin. Just a point of clarification. Obviously, normally the hearing order would be that we ask the staff to provide information on the agenda items and then we ask the applicant to talk about it. Obviously, I'm not gonna, there is no applicant, so I will skip that, but for items one and two, I assume that I will open for public comments and just have everybody keep them brief. Is that correct?
That would be correct. Steve, if you want to chime in, I do have one public comment, at least from Dr. Gazan Romani that I can read into the record when the time comes up now.
Yeah, after, after the presentation, I would just open the public hearing. And then allow, allow members of the public to make their comments and then at the conclusion of that, close the public hearing.
Okay, okay. So the only step that I'm skipping is obviously asking for the applicant or the applicant's representative to comment on the proposal.
That's right.
There's no, there's no applicant or applicant's representative here.
I know that I'm just confirming that and I'm confirming that we open this to the public.
Right.
Okay. Hi, James. Oh, you're muted.
You're muted. You're muted, James. No one can hear you.
Hi, Shelly.
Hi.
Hi, Alex.
Hi, how are you?
Good.
Hey, James, after the meeting, I'm gonna walk Oliver and I'm gonna go down to Romero and up to Dresta.
Okay.
I'm letting you know because I know you go up and walk the dogs after the meeting.
Yeah, I won't be walking until nine.
Okay. No, but tonight, don't you walk the dogs after the meeting?
Not until nine o'clock.
Oh, we're gonna go beyond nine.
Oh. Don't be so pessimistic.
Yeah, it's gonna be a long meeting, I guess.
Yeah.
Well, my, my presentation.
I'll go down floor.
My presentation is as lengthy as you want it to be or is as short as you want it to be, but I do, I'm ready either way, so.
Fellow commissioners, what do you think? I mean, I don't know how much of a presentation I need only
Well, this.
We're so, I feel like we're so well versed into this that it's more like just getting into a lot of our questions and review, but you tell me how you feel.
Yeah, well, I could tell you that this has been in the news. It's been published, there are articles in the LA Times, in other publications. I don't think we need to do anything more than give a brief summary, a concise and brief summary, rather than go through chapter and verse on this thing. Because it's published, it's well-known. The ordinance is out there, the proposed ordinance, I should say, is out there. I don't think we need to repeat the same thing over and over again.
Commissioner Dustin, Commissioner Okazaki, do you agree with that?
I'm sorry, I joined a little late, so I'm not exactly sure what the question is, sorry.
How, how lengthy of a summary do we need from staff with regards to agenda items one and two? And there's my cat.
Oh, I see.
My comment is that I, I need a deeper briefing. So I, I, I would, I would not mind a longer presentation by staff.
Okay.
I'm not as up to speed as how it is.
I, I guess I'm comfortable either long or short as far as the presentation, I just know that I have a lot of questions and I anticipate some lengthy discussion.
Yeah, I know, I, I think this all tend to go a little bit longer depending upon the attendance at the at the hearing and the participation by public speakers.
Hello, Commissioner Wright.
Hey, hi guys.
Hi.
I got it this time.
Yeah. I'll give it just another minute and then I guess we can begin if everyone is ready.
Okay, Chair, I have seven o'clock.
All right. Yeah, since we, I feel as though we all anticipate this to be a longer than normal meeting that we've had recently, and so we will begin. And I let's see, the, if I go over the, the normal opening statements and opening remarks, typically we would have a flag salute since we are all over Zoom, we will forego that. Could we please have a roll call of all of the commissioners?
Yes, Commission Chair Boyle.
Here.
Commission Vice Chair Brody.
Present.
Commission, Commissioner Chang has an excused absence. He reached out to me and I informed the chair. Commissioner Dustin.
Here.
Commissioner Wright.
Here.
And Commissioner Alternate Okazaki.
Here.
Thank you. For everyone attending, the agenda was posted seventy-two hours in advance at San Marino City Hall, San Marino Public Library, the San Marino Recreation Department, as well as the San Marino website. Each commissioner has received the plans and staff comments and has reviewed every item on the agenda and visited each site. The general order for hearing each case will be as follows. Staff will discuss the case and provide background information and a recommendation. I will ask the applicant or applicant's representative to comment on the proposal. The hearing will then be open to the public and I'll ask for comments for, against, or about the project. We will take comments from in-person participants, or in this case, just comments from participants in the virtual world. Due to the nature of our agenda items today, I will be enforcing a stricter than normal time limit of three minutes and especially if you are repeating comments or repeating yourself just to keep this, this meeting going. In all cases, please come forward and give your name and address. When speaking on an item, please do not repeat comments previously made, but rather acknowledge agreement with previous speakers. However, please present any additional comments. At the conclusion of the public comments, the applicant will have a chance to respond and no further comments from the public will be accepted. I will then ask for, and I should state at that point, then the public part of this meeting is closed and will probably not be reopened, and I'm saying that for anybody who will have additional comments after that. I will then ask for comments from each of the commissioners. Most of the cases will involve variances, conditional use permits and/or design review. The commission will discuss and act on each one individually. In each case, variances will be considered first, then conditional use permits, and finally, design review. If there's no, if, if there is no motion for approval or denial, the planning commission has the option of continuing the application to a future meeting. In the event of a denial, it is hoped that the applicant will have heard comments during the public comment period and during deliberations that will be useful in submitting an applicant, resubmitting an application. It is important for the property owner to understand that once a project is approved by the commission, the drawings become legal documents. If any changes are made to the project subsequent to approval without obtaining proper approval of those changes, then the property owner is in fact breaking the law. There is a risk of having to change the project back to the originally approved design or paying a fine to the city of San Marino equal or greater to five percent of the project valuation or twenty-five hundred dollars and then resubmitting the changes made to the project to the commission. It is also important to understand that there is a fifteen-day appeal period after action has been taken for the applicant or any interested party to request the city council to review and act on the case. The commission will usually take items in the order shown on the agenda. Occasionally, it will take them out of order if there are a large number of people here on one item. That item may be taken ahead of others as a courtesy to those present. The commission will not start a new item after eleven PM. Items not heard will be carried over to the adjourned meeting or the next regular meeting. I'm sorry. Okay, I will now open it up for public comments of anything that is not on our current agenda. I see none. Okay. So in that case, we will move on to the first agenda item. Director Hamilton. Would you like to go over agenda items number one? I know we're hearing items one and two together. So would you like to go over items one and two? And we shall begin.
Thank you, Chair and Planning Commission. I'm gonna share my, my screen at this point and launch PowerPoint. Hopefully, there it goes. That hopefully, are you able to see this?
No, not yet.
Not yet, okay. It should, bear with me just one second. It's up on my screen, but that doesn't mean you're seeing it, so let me let me get to let me move this. If I can here, your screen. There, I think I've located it.
There we go.
Okay. Okay, now. Good, so. Okay, now we're here, right? Okay, thank you. Briefly, the items before you tonight are public hearing items, one of which is a draft ordinance, which will amend several sections of the code to comply with Senate Bill nine and Senate Bill thirty-five, and I'll go into what those items are. This ordinance contains a series of standards that will conform to state law, but also it's important to acknowledge that there are some local amendments that we're proposing that will still be consistent with state law, but will provide what we think are some additional protections to the city. And the item after the ordinance is a resolution which adopts some additional standards as it relates to building design standards associated with lot splits, urban lot split site layout and lot configuration standards, as well as objective design standards for residential uses in the C1 zone. By now, I'm sure most of you've heard about Senate Bill nine and Senate Bill thirty-five. As you know, there are two separate Senate bills which, if enacted or when enacted and/or further enforced on January one of twenty-twenty-two, could drastically alter the character of this community, and I don't think that that's an overstatement. Senate Bill nine was created to allow for urban lot splits, the intent of which was to increase the overall supply of housing in the state. Just as a bit of background on this, I'm a history buff. Most of you probably remember that the, you don't remember it personally, but recall that the subdivision map act was created over sixty years ago. And it, for two purposes really, was to afford local government greater control over subdivisions in its city. And to make sure that the design of the subdivision was consistent with any adopted general or community plans. And more importantly, it, it allowed for and required for the design and, and the provision for necessary infrastructure to serve the subdivision. Examples being streets, lighting, water, utilities and the like, so that the city wouldn't be suffered with or suffer from undue fiscal impacts as a result of the subdivision. So as a brief overview of SB nine and what it does do and what it allows, it allows that one lot can be divided into a maximum of two lots. The new lot must be at least forty percent of the size of the original lot. The minimum size of the new lot is twelve hundred square feet, and this is taken straight from SB nine. Each lot can have two units. Accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units are counted towards the maximum number of units allowed within the lot split.
I'm sorry, Dr. Hamilton, I just had a quick question. Are you showing a PowerPoint presentation now? Because I'm just seeing your desktop.
Oh, you, okay, I apologize for that. Yes, I have slides and I'm so sorry if you're not seeing that because that's, that's what I'm going through. That was my intent.
Okay.
Let me, thank you, let me.
Sounded like you were going through slides, so I thought I'd check.
I was, and I put a lot of work into the slides and unfortunately, I now need to, let me see if I can go to share my screen again here. And yeah. Okay. I apologize for the technical glitch on my part. What, what I could do is I could make this PowerPoint available. I'm not sure why I'm not able to, to access it and share it. If, if you don't mind, I'm not sure why. Do you, you don't see it at all, huh?
No, I, I'm seeing just blue and a couple of tiny little dots which represent, I think, what you wanted to blow up and share. But nevertheless, you're doing a wonderful job of going through it orally, and I have no problem with your continuing to do so.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And, and what I'll do is it's based on what's in your staff report, but I really thought it best to highlight some provisions, and I could make sure I share this this PowerPoint with, with the planning commission and any members of the public as, as, as needed. Thank you. So as I was saying about the SB nine summary, it does, what it does allow is you, it does allow for accessory dwelling units or dwelling units to be counted toward the maximum number of units with a lot split. Each unit can be at least eight hundred square feet. The SB nine summary continued also has some processing requirements. The city cannot.
I'm sorry, can I interrupt you right there? You said each one can be at least eight hundred square feet?
I thought there was a cap.
Or a maximum.
It's, the way we're setting it up is it's a minimum and a maximum, so it's eight hundred square feet maximum. That's not.
At least is very different than a maximum. So I think we should make that very clear.
Yes, we will. In, in this case, we're, it's a, it's a minimum and maximum. The state is simply saying that they have to be at least eight hundred square feet. We're saying it's eight hundred square feet maximum.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
As it relates to processing, as you're aware, the city cannot apply subjective rules such as design guidelines. Projects must be approved on a ministerial basis, meaning that if you satisfy all the requirements set forth in the ordinance, then you get a permit. No discretion can be used in reviewing the application and no hearing is, is required. In addition, other requirements state that they cannot, the units created cannot be used for, as short-term rentals. We're not required to approve an accessory dwelling unit or junior accessory dwelling unit in addition to the two units per lot if the applicant applies for both the lot split and to residential. So to keep in mind here, it's two and two max regardless of the, of the situation. Does allow for structures to be attached, i.e. as a duplex. The owner must sign an affidavit that they will live on site for three years. The owner cannot further subdivide in the future as, you know, as part of this urban lot subdivision, and they also cannot subdivide an adjacent site. The city must allow the owner to keep non-conforming conditions, i.e. setbacks. A little bit about SB thirty-five, which has been around since twenty-eighteen. The intent of that was it's a series of bills to address the critical shortage of housing in the state. But what's key here with SB thirty-five, although it's been around for a while, coming January one of twenty-twenty-two, there's a, gonna be a new enforcement arm associated with this coming from the state that's strictly gonna be looking for compliance as it relates to requiring that any affordable housing projects, they, they would be approved through a ministerial project and the, the city's more importantly can only impose clearly defined objective standards for streamlined residential projects. Basically, we can no longer impose discretionary or subjective aspects of review for projects of that type. It's important to note here, we have prepared objective residential design standards document to impose standards on these streamlined residential projects. And basically, you're looking at residential that is allowed in, in our C1 zone, but with a conditional use permit, so I can go over, over that to further degree. So the long and short of it, a staff has drafted an ordinance that comply and a regulatory framework that complies with state law SB nine and SB thirty-five, while preserving the character of the community, encouraging affordable housing opportunities where possible, utilizing documents summarized in the next slide. And the key here, and it's in your staff report, is the, the framework of the ordinance and resolution that's presented to you is we have the ordinance itself with standards addressing both SB nine and SB thirty-five. We have a resolution with attachments. The way, the reason why we're doing this is that the resolution allows for more detailed design standards and affords the flexibility to the city to fine-tune or modify standards over time. There's three attachments to the resolution that you're being asked to consider. One is the two-unit residential development design standards. So we've come up with some hard standards that go beyond what's in the ordinance to really make sure that we try and get for these units consistency and uniformity to the maximum degree possible. There's an attachment three B, which is the two-unit residential development and urban lot split configuration standards, basically what the lot split standards are going to, what will be applied to a future subdivision, urban lot split. And then attachment three C is the objective design standards for residential uses in the C1 zone, addressing SB thirty-five. This was modeled after a standard document that we obtained from the city of Gilroy. Was told by an expert land use consultant that their, their document was probably as good as it's gonna get. So we basically took it from Gilroy, modified it slightly for San Marino specifically as it relates to some hard standards for light intrusion, because as you know, our C1 directly abuts or is only separated from R1 by an alley. So you want to make sure that we, we have some standards addressing any light spillage, very strong standards, and they're in there. So why, why recommend adopting design standards by resolution? As I said, we do anticipate coming, this is a work in progress. We will be coming back to the planning commission and city council for further review at a future date. And if they're adopted by, if the standards are adopted by resolution, we can adopt and implement changes more quickly than if they're adopted by ordinance, and you all know how it works for an ordinance. It's a first and second reading, and it doesn't go into effect until thirty days after the second reading and adoption by the city council. Whereas a resolution adopting design standards can be considered at one planning commission meeting and one city council meeting and can take effect immediately. I do have some key terms of the ordinance. It's very detailed. I can kind of touch over it very quickly if you like. And again, I'll try and load up my PowerPoint. I, I do apologize because that would certainly make it a lot easier for you. But at this point, in some of the key terms in the ordinance are that if you have an existing single-family resident, you can add one more additional unit of not more than eight hundred square feet. And this really applies if you're creating a duplex. So let's say you have an existing single-family residence and you want to add a, a second unit to it or create a second unit that's maximum of eight hundred square feet. The condition is that you can't demolish more than twenty-five percent of the existing exterior walls of the existing residence that you're looking to convert into a, into a duplex, unless the single-family residence has not been occupied by a tenant in the last three years. If the parcel is vacant and undeveloped, or if there is an existing single-family residence which is slated for demolition in conjunction with a request, again, it goes back to my point, no more than two units of eight hundred square feet each may be developed. In either case, there is a, a distance or a separation of ten feet if required between either the duplex or the separated units from any other structural mallon. Again, as I said, in it, in the case of units created as a result of this lot split, no more than two units in any combination, whether it's the primary dwelling unit, accessory dwelling unit, or junior accessory dwelling units will be allowed. One of the discussions that we had brief discussion with council and we wanted to explore with the planning commission is affordability and, and whether there's a desire to address that in, in this community. What we propose in the ordinance is that one of the units, if it's created as a result of the, the urban lot split, that it be made available for a period of ninety-nine years for very low-income individuals or families subject to an affordable housing regulatory agreement to be approved by the city manager or designate. So this is something that we'll definitely want to discuss with you as we get further into this meeting. Other standards include all new dwelling units shall not exceed sixteen feet in height. All dwelling units shall, new dwelling units shall have independent exterior access and separate utility connections. Another local amendment here is that a one-car garage will be required for each unit with minimum interior dimensions of ten feet wide by twenty feet deep, unless there's an exemption contained within SB nine, and there is no exemption in this community as it relates to high-quality transit. That's the provision that would allow you to waive this parking requirement. Each garage will need to be accessed, accessed by a nine-foot-wide driveway and comply with access standards established in our new urban lot split building design standards. We have a requirement that all new units have fire sprinklers. We also require that units proposed on the same parcel, if they're new, that, and there's an existing dwelling unit that they utilize the same exterior materials and colors as the existing unit. Also, each new residential dwelling unit shall be required to provide two hundred square feet of private open space per unit contiguous to the unit with minimum dimensions of ten by twenty feet. Lastly, very, very important on this, all new construction applied for, allowed for under this ordinance needs to comply with all applicable sections of the city adopted twenty-nineteen California Fire Code, including local amendments and any subsequent amendments adopted by the city. Said requirements are included but not limited to fire acts, apparatus, access roads. and any additional roads as may be required by the fire official, fire sprinklers, fire alarms, including fire station, fire alarm monitoring, premises identification and water protection or fire protection, water supplies, including but not limited to the requirements for any new offsite or onsite of fire hydrants. This is a public safety requirement, life safety, so we can't override that and would never suggest we do that. So we're making sure that's in the ordinance. One other key point here or several other key terms in the proposed ordinance is no phasing of if you're going to build two new units, you got to build them simultaneously. You can't start one, finish it, and then move on to the other. Though we will require reciprocal easement agreement for any common driveway access, and that's to be recorded on title. Will require that any new units constructed under this ordinance be lead platinum certified. I'm sure you're all familiar with the levels of certification as it relates to lead. That's a a very strenuous, as you know, energy efficiency design. And we're we're opting for platinum certification as a requirement. Tree preservation, any construction either new or additional square footage may not remove any trees or must not remove any trees without obtaining a tree removal permit. And then the payment of any applicable development impact fees will be required. If it's an urban lot subdivision, a a subdivision map will be required pursuant to the standards that's set forth in our local ordinance. Also, as part of the mapping, the applicant needs to provide will serve letters from the utilities. Each lot, each new lot created as a result shall have a minimum of sixty feet of frontage, except that a flag lot shall have a twenty five foot frontage. Any lot created as a result of the lot split needs to file a grading plan complete with all the information about existing and proposed contours, the amount of earthwork that's being affected, and a maximum of a hundred cubic yards of grading will be permitted. And a hundred cubic yards is not a lot, but you know, that's mostly flat work, but that's in our 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 ordinance as a local amendment. Of course, the applicant will need to comply with the city's MS four water quality permit, including the low impact development proportion of that. As it relates to affordable housing, and and this is where it's I not being able to pull up the table is is not, it's in your staff report. Basically, the table that's in your staff report is our is an income limitation table that is provided by the state community, housing and community development department. It's the twenty twenty one income limitations. The reason why this is in here is I just want you to become familiar with terms as we use them going forward. You'll see in the table that income and family size plays a part as to what is defined as extremely low, very low, low median or moderate income. And just for your information, the Los Angeles County area median income is eighty thousand. So just as a point of reference, as we read across and down, I say a ta- a family of four, if their annual income is thirty five thousand four hundred fifty, they would fall under the extremely low category. Conversely, a family of four, if their income is ninety six thousand dollars, they'd be considered to be moderate income. Other terms that are used when we're talking about affordable housing, the HCD uses the federal housing and urban development limits based on local conditions. But when you hear the term AMI, what that stands for is area median income. And when so, for example, when we refer to extremely low income, it's zero to thirty percent of AMI. Conversely, moderate income is eighty to a hundred percent, twenty percent of AMI. Not intending for this to, you know, really be detailed, but wanted to familiarize you with those terms. I could also go into what's in the resolution, the attachments to the resolution as residential design standards, two lot residential design standards or two unit residential design standards, sorry, if you like. It's really, it's got standards as it relates to facades and their visibility. If you want, I can go through each individual item, but it deals with exterior materials from cladding to roofs. And I'm I can go through the entire list if you wish, or just give you an overview of it. We have windows, a lot of detail on windows. As you know, windows are obviously incredibly important in this community. So we want to make sure that we're putting as much in these standards as possible to mimic what we already require, and that's what's in there. We have some standards as it relates to the slope of of the the height, which is sixteen feet maximum. Sloped roof, which is a maximum of two and twelve pitch. Prohibition on the placement of any roof mounted air conditioners. Rain gutters, downspouts, vents shall be painted to match. So things that we already have that require consistency and design. We go a little bit further in in the case of where there's an existing single, where there's no existing single family residence, or if the residence is proposed to be demolished. So let's just assume you're starting from scratch on this new urban lot split. We have standards in there that ensure that the facades are vis- any facades visible from the public right of way treated with the same massing layout and types of architectural features as a front facade on any existing structure, assuming that there's a structure. New units shall utilize the same exterior material and color palettes. We have details that mimic what we already have in in place for roofing materials and roofs. Same thing with rain gutters, downspouts and the like. Same thing with windows and cladding. So as I said, a lot of this repeats itself, but view this as an expansion of the standards discussion. We also have lot split standards, which are also in your resolution. This will apply to any new lots that are created as as a result of this process. We have standards for those lots as it relates to the frontage of the lots, as I said, requirements for filing a subdivision map, the orientation of the lot and 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 the like. There's some details as to as it relates to corner lots and anything to to ensure that any lot that's created as a result of this urban lot split is as is as consistent as we can make it. And and we do have extensive standards relating to each unit that's created as a result has to have its own primary entryway with a unit identification, lighting shielded from pointed away from other residences, a landing area. The ori- orientation of these new units is important, so we have detailed standards as it relates to that. Also, as it relates to lot split standards, detailed standards about driveways as I as I touched on earlier, you can, insofar as, and I'll get to part and gates and fencing for driveways, follow our current regulations. There's details about front yards. One important detail is that the total amount of the front yard that is in hardscape cannot exceed forty five percent. So we're trying to repeat as much of the current standards as we can and still be consistent with SB nine and SB thirty five. One key point here is we do have a front yard setback for new units of fifteen feet from the street. However, it's important to note that if if complying with that that will prohibit you or keep you from building two eight hundred square foot units, then you would be allowed to encroach into that fifteen foot setback, but by no less than four feet. So you can't be any closer than four feet. And then hedges, fences, gates, follow the same regulations and procedures of Article thirteen of Chapter twenty three. Same thing for side yard setbacks. We try to stay as consistent as we can. But the key here is we can't prohibit the construction of these units, and they can be allowed to be as close to as four feet to any property line. But we do prohibit certain things from being located in the side yard setback. We do that now. We're carrying that forward. Wanted to touch on parking, which is critical. As you know, there's no on street parking that's permitted in this city. So to take that a step further, we are saying no parking shall be permitted in the front yard of the lot. Parking located in the side yard shall be screened from view of the public right of way. A parking space may be located in the rear yard, provided it is not less than one foot from the rear of the property line and four feet from the side of the lot. And garages shall have a minimum setback of four feet from the property line. Parking spaces shall be located on the same lot or parcel of land as a residence being served. No covered tandem spaces permitted. Garages cannot be converted to livable space. No new carports shall be constructed or reconstructed, and portico shares may not be used as a substitute for covered parking requirements. Again, I apologize for not being able to share this with you. It's it would be available to you at your request. I do have, if I could share that screen, we do have the third set of number three in the resolution, which is the the objective standards for residential development in the C one zone. As I explained earlier, that's modeled after the Gilroy model with some local amendments. At this point, this does conclude my presentation. Be more than happy to answer any questions of you and then at the end get to the recommendation.
Thank you so much. May I request that you try to at least stop screen share so that we can get to
Absolutely.
A wider
Yes.
gallery. Commissioners, do you have any questions for staff at this time?
Yeah, I've got I've got a number of them.
Before we start, could we just ask Director Hamilton to check the the waiting room? I believe there are a few.
I, yeah. Thank you for that, Commissioner Dustin. Yes, there are some people who are waiting.
Yes. Excuse me one second. Let me get to this. Okay. Stop the sharing, that stop that annoying thing. So, okay, let me get back over. There is, there are some people in the waiting room. There's a chat request. So if you'd like, I could open that up.
I believe the chat just said that there were people waiting in the waiting room.
Okay, I'll I'll let them in. I'll admit them all. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
May I add also for the record that there are, is a power outage affecting a significant portion of Southern San Marino Lorraine Road. So we have many people who are interested in attending but trying to scramble for ways or listening anyway, trying to scramble for ways. So this might to listen in tonight or give their comments. So I don't know how that will affect the meeting, but I wanted to make that part of the record so that we are aware in the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Chair Boyle, may I interject?
Of course.
Would it be possible for Mr. Hamilton to put his PowerPoint presentation in the chat box so that those people who are now just joining us and those of you just listen could then at least have access to it? There is a way to download documents through the chat box.
Okay, I'll I'll try to do that.
Mr. Hamilton, you can, if you'd like, you can email it to me and I can I can try and add it to the chat box.
Okay, let me just do that then. Thank you.
And commissioners, in order to make this as organized as possible, since I know a lot of people have questions, let's make sure to not speak, excuse me, let's try to not speak over one another and give each person time. Commissioner Brody, I guess as soon as Director Hamilton is ready, you had commented first that you had a lot of questions.
Correct. Are are am I ready to go ahead with them or you want to proceed differently?
I believe so. Yes.
Okay. The the enactment, as I understand it, or the proposed enactment, a person who wants to create one of these duplexes out of a single family residence must live on the site for three years. What is the penalty under the enactment if one doesn't do that?
I would defer to the city attorney on that, that that I think we would have some remedies via code enforcement as it relates to, I don't know, it wouldn't necessarily be a nuisance abatement, but we'd we'd have to look at that.
Yeah, there would be a
I think, go ahead, please. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I just that there would be a covenant recorded on the property that if it was violated, we could bring a an action in court to enforce that, among other remedies that we would have under the municipal code.
Enforce it, you mean forcing the person to live in the well, the structure?
Yeah.
That may be able to How about, how about a and a code section which makes it punishable by six months or or five hundred dollar fine for each day that they don't live in the in the unit. I mean, I think that would be essential. It is missing in the enactment. My understanding is a lot of the people and the developers are the people who really wanted this to happen certainly didn't want any penalties for going out and and missing their three years in the unit. A lot of them simply wanted to turn a single family residence into a duplex and make a a chunk of change in the process. So I think they allow us, I would assume they allow us, and I think it would be essential to have a code section which essentially makes it a misdemeanor to violate that. And another thing I'm concerned about is the one unit out of the two must be for quote unquote low income. But there's nothing with regard to leases or subleases that the low income supposed resident or owner could engage in. And I'm throwing out a just something that hit me. I'm, you know, looking at this from a business perspective, and you have someone who only makes twenty five thousand a year, and they're in the second unit, and they lease it out for three thousand or four thousand dollars. Meanwhile, they're paying where there's, you know, maybe five hundred dollars a month, and they're cashing in on the rest. And they could be essentially being used as dummies, if you will, or front people to collect the the extra money from a lease or sublease. Is there anything that covers that aspect of the creation of a duplex?
I'm looking for Mr. Hamilton.
Yes, I'm I'm here. I not not that I'm aware of. We could certainly explore these. I anticipated there would be a lot of questions this evening. And and City Attorney, I did send the presentation over to you. So we'll thank you for helping to make that available. We'll we'll have to look into that, Commissioner, and see because the SB nine itself is silent on that as it is on a lot of different things. So
On the things, on the, yeah, and they seem to be silent on the things that would basically irritate the developers. And and I understand that. But I think it opens the door for what we can do to make sure that what is happening here doesn't provide a windfall for people who want to destroy the the R one zone, the single family concept, and and create these multiple duplexes all around town for their own profit. There's another section that I looked at in the enactment that's kind of interesting that talks about two hundred square feet of private, and I they use the word private open space for each individual unit in the duplexes. Now, by private, does that mean that it is not visible by the neighbor? And again, I'm thinking about the density that we run into all the time and the placement of windows. Does it mean that it should not be open to the view of neighbors? I'm just throwing that out. I I don't see anything in there that covers that. And then as to the, I believe there's a sixty foot frontage. And and these are questions, so please don't take these as statements. These are just questions. Is there anything that that speaks to the definition of a private open space? I didn't see it in the enactment itself.
So so Commissioner, to answer your question on the private open space, that is, that is a recommendation of staff. We did, we did require that it be contiguous and have minimum dimensions. But your your points are well taken as relates to, you know, how private is private and the and
Exactly.
windows and whatnot. So we'll definitely have to spend some time on that, look at that. As it relates to the the sixty foot frontage, which I believe you've mentioned, again, that's not in the SB nine. It's staff's attempt to to bring some standards to bear on this to give a little bit more specificity while still staying consistent with SB nine. We we don't want the creation of lots that are simply going to be, you know, ten feet wide by, you know, five hundred feet deep, not saying that's going to happen anyway. But as as I think I'd mentioned prior, but not to all the commission, staff didn't have time to really map this out. staff didn't have time um, to really map this out. Ideally, it would have been good. Uh, I was talking to our senior planner Alicia, we, we kind of figured that given the lot configurations in the city of San Marino and the sizes and shapes, you could probably get eight to different ten, eight to ten different variations of lot configurations in this city. And, you know, ideally, we would go through and identify those and map them out and give it some certainty. And that's what this, setting this up uh, by resolution will allow for us to do in the near future. Because we need to give this some more predictability and certainty because it's too open-ended in my opinion, but we've tried to to bring as many standards to bear as possible.
Another thing is with regard to the layout, are, are we permitted to prohibit flag lots? Of a lot setup?
Uh, I don't believe we can prohibit that, I think what, all we could do is simply regulate it. Um, and, and just, and give it some standards, that's why there's a minimum uh, size uh, for the, the stem of the lot itself. Sorry, I'm, I've got to go in and met some people, but so at any rate, um, we can't prohibit them, to, to my knowledge, but what, what we can do is give it some standards as it like, as it relates to the size of the stem of the flagged lot. And, and I think there are frankly, there's other requirements that it will kick in, especially for fire, when you get a flagged lot that's really deep.
Yeah.
And you're getting beyond a hundred fifty feet and
Right.
Yeah, so there's other uh, things that you have to layer in over this that will protect us.
And, and I've got a question on uh, on the wherethes that appear at the beginning of uh, of the document we looked at, and it seems to be, and I'm sorry to use this term, but that's how it hit me. It appears to be that we're sycophants with regard to what was done by Tony Atkins and her crew up in Sacramento. Uh, when we say things like it's the intent uh, to provide for more opportunities for affordable housing and, and so we're going to go ahead and do that. Uh, the language, I, I think I wrote that state law makers are now in increasingly concerned and there's a real progressive and positive change being made, these are direct uh, quotes right out of the wherethes, and my point is uh, there is not one single bit of evidence that what they're doing is anything more than a gift to developers. There's not one study on this. Why the heck did we put that in there in the wherethes? I don't understand why it should be in there, and I, I do not recommend under any circumstances uh, advocating for any approval to the city council of anything that uh does nothing more than assume facts, not in evidence that, that what they are doing up in Sacramento is in fact a solution to the uh, affordability issue that people are being faced with. Frankly, I, I, I have very negative feelings towards it, and so does about seventy or seventy-five percent of the California public. So I'm, I'm concerned, why, why did that get in there?
Commissioner, it was, in, in, in discussing with, with council briefly, we wanted to just uh, open that up. Um, I, a lot of cities are, are looking to that, um, but that's why I'm here to take your feedback and get back to the city council on that. Uh, I believe that, you know, we spoke uh, directly about it and, and quite frankly, given the economics to the land values in this community and the cost of construction and the fact that the state, to my knowledge, is not making a lot of affordable housing money available. I doubt that you're going to see that here in the near term or maybe even in the long term. Um, it's just really a point uh, for discussion. Um, but we'll take our direction from the, the planning commission and certainly the city council on that topic.
Let me just point out to the uh, city attorney who's present, when I look at twenty-three point oh-two-point-three-three A one period, it, it reads, "The intent of this section is to provide opportunities for more affordable housing in existing single-family residential zones as mandated by state law." I would uh, prefer that read, "The intent of this section is to comply with the mandate by state law," period. And not endorse uh, this frolic and detour that a, a couple of uh of legislators got into up in Sacramento.
So Commissioner Brody, with all due respect, um, just to keep this moving at the, at, at this point.
I'm done.
Okay, well, I was just going to say at this point, you're, you're giving more comments and notes as opposed to questions. And so I would like to move on to any other commissioners that might have a question for staff.
That, that gets difficult because um, I have questions, but my questions are sort of pseudo comments as well. And there aren't really questions that I sort of expect staff to be able to answer flat out, I mean, there are maybe a few.
So maybe at this point, sorry to interrupt you, Commissioner.
No, that's fine.
Dustin, I, maybe at this point, we should clarify, are there questions that are points of clarification that are needed? It's a little bit more nuanced than question, unanswerable questions. Commissioner, right?
I have a question, I'm just wondering if you tried to quote-unquote pencil out um, any uh, of these provisions, in other words, take a, a typical, to the extent there is a typical lot in San Marino and see um, you know, eight hundred square foot lots, I mean, sorry, units, uh, one is owner occupied, one is affordable. Um, is it going to make sense to demolish uh, you know, three million dollar house? Have those construction costs for that uh, to happen? Or even uh, you know, a million and a half smaller lot, you know, maybe your typical R one type lot, a five block square feet, just have you penciled out anything like that?
Commissioner, great question, no, we haven't, uh, but that is in, an important part of the exercise. In, in my opinion, would be to have a, an economist that specializes in land development, take a look at this. Again, based on what our land values are in San Marino, the cost of construction, um, it's, it's highly, in my opinion, it's highly unlikely you're going to get um, a habitat for humanity, for example, nothing wrong with them, coming in on one of these newly created lots and proposing to build two eight hundred square foot units. I, I don't think the numbers are ever going to add up there between the land cost and the cost of construction. I don't see it in, in, in the foreseeable future, but to answer a question, no, but we definitely need to do that, and I'm working on that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dustin, since I cut you off, do you have any questions of clarification, let's call it just simple?
Um, I'll start asking questions and if I start getting too commentary, tell me to hold up my comment.
Okay, okay, okay.
You, uh, Director Hamilton, you made a, a statement about um I think Article thirteen um, in the uh, city ordinances uh, to help sort of both those, those restrictions that are there uh, would also exist with these units that we're talking about, so they're not, you, you don't have to get into uh, sort of the details with um uh, fencing because you're just making a reference to that Article thirteen. Uh, an example would be like chain link fences in, in front yards. Um, so those, I'm assuming would be off the table for any of this type of construction.
That's correct.
But what about things like um, vinyl fencing? Which, to my knowledge, the code doesn't say no vinyl fencing, that's something that we take care of at the design review level, um, and we, we don't approve things like that. So could we add that and say, no vinyl fencing?
I'll defer to the city attorney on this, but on, in my opinion, if you want to put a prohibition in this ordinance, that specific, I, I don't see that it would be a problem. I, I know that, that there's a, there's an issue with vinyl fencing in, in, in this community, we all know that it degrades over time and it doesn't look as good uh, within a matter of months. So if, if that's the direction and the city attorney concurs, then we could certainly recommend that to council because we can prohibit certain things that don't necessarily impact the ability to build those eight hundred square foot units.
Yes, you, you, you can add that prohibition so long as it's an objective standard, and that sounds like an objective standard. So I don't see any, anything that would prevent you from adding a vinyl fencing prohibition to the design standards.
And do we, I guess sort of a more general question, do we have to get all this dialed in first time out of the gate? I noticed in some of the language, it references that um, the planning commission or the city council can establish or revise the um, objective uh, design guidelines or the objective design standards through resolution. Does that mean that we can come back and revisit this and if we see construction that we don't like the look of, we can come back and add more specific things?
Yes, that's my interpretation.
Okay.
That you can come back, and I think that's the intent is to get as close as we can to a set of standards that the city is comfortable with, and then later we come back and we can revisit that language and further refine that.
Thank you. Uh, Chair Boyle, I think that's all I have right now, I've got to sort of scroll through my notes and see if I have more questions.
I have a Thank you. Um, there's, there's a provision in here that says something about, you know, if, if there's been a tenant within the last three years and you can't do something, I think it's the twenty-five percent, you know, down to twenty-five percent. How are we going to enforce that? How are we going to know? Are we going to require them to show us some proof of tenant? And is that in the ordinance? If it is, I missed it, I'm sorry.
It's, it's not specifically in the ordinance, but we could certainly look at, at a way to see how we can craft some provisions to enforce that, but it's, it's not in there currently. It's more administrative, but that's a very good question.
Yeah, I've really struggled with um some of these provisions and what is different from these provisions, what they allow and the NADUs, accessory dwelling units. And as we know, the state before they did SB nine has really um uh, it, it has really required cities to, to again ministerially approve and, and to allow a lot more accessory dwelling units. So here, when I look at some of these provisions, and there's one of them in particular, I remember reading, you know, you've got an existing house and you can add eight hundred units, and yes, I understand you can do it attached. And, and so can, you can, they use also, and it can be a maximum of eight hundred square feet, what does that all sound like? It sounds like an ADU. So I'm trying to understand the difference between what is allowed and or required by the ADU laws and these laws. In particular, the ones that say, you know, you can have, you can add one unit to your unit or duplex.
Um, Commissioner, that, that's a good question, I, at this point, we, we try to obviously match what's on the books as it relates to uh, ADUs and junior ADUs. Arguably, that, that ordinance needs some work, I know that there were probably several uh, versions of that as it first got uh, came to the city, so we'll, we'll have to take a look at that and see what we can do to um, I, I think there are things that could be strengthened that'll still be consistent with state law, but we're running into on the practical side of things as we review these ADUs and junior ADUs, you know, from, from impacts to trees to other environmental impacts to you know, we're running into a lot of things on that side, so um, it doesn't, I can't say that it syncs up exactly. Um, but we just wanted to make sure that under no circumstances would this be, could this be read to allow for the construction of two new units in addition to ADUs and junior ADUs.
Yeah, that, and, and maybe it doesn't matter, by the way, maybe it doesn't matter, this is the same thing you, but I just, this was confusing to me, I guess, more than anything. And my last question, I hope I think, is the other thing I'm struggling with when I read this, or another thing I'm struggling with when I read this is access, I think that's a very good deal. And even though you say, I gotta comply with, with fire access, yay, I'm asking you, you know, what does that mean?
Well, practically speaking, uh, had a really good chat with our fire plan checker and our great fire chief. And I'm, I, I'm not a firefighter, never was, um, but I, as I understand it, and you, I'm sure you know this, um, you have to be within a hundred fifty feet of either an apparatus or the hose has to be able to, from a hydrant or a uh, apparatus, has to be able to reach to a hundred fifty feet of the furthest point of the structure. There are some exceptions to that, I believe sprinklers and cer- certain things you can do to gain more distance, but effectively, what this means is when you're looking at flagged lots or the design of a lot, it's a real consideration. Because if you're talking about, say, a flagged lot or a lot that's very deep, way in the back, for lack of a better term, since we haven't sketched these out, it's kind of hard to, to describe it. But if you've got the stem of, say, a flagged lot or any kind of lot, and that lot that's newly created is through the rear, and let's say it's a five hundred foot deep lot, well, guess what, you've got to provide access to, for a fire truck uh, to be within a hundred fifty feet of the structure you're building there or an onsite fire hydrant. And at that point, you're also into the hammerhead, you know, the fire department requirement for the turnaround for a fire apparatus. So we wanted to make sure that we were as strong as possible there. I know it may not be as clear, but the, the verbiage is very clear that the fire code, you can't override the fire code and there can be additional requirements. You could have to put it, you may have to put in an onsite fire hydrant. Uh, you may have to do a, a bull belt or, or turnaround for a fire truck. So that's what we wanted to capture in this ordinance, and I think that we did.
So it might impact more like you've got a unit behind i- your, your, your residence here, so it'd be far, farther back perhaps?
Absolutely, as you know, we have some very deep lots in the, in the city of San Marino, and we wanted to take that into account. And I believe that we did a good job with that.
Right, but you're allowing for common driveways as well.
I'm, I'm sorry?
You're allowing for common driveways.
Yes, but, but also one, one messy bit of uh, aspect from a planning perspective as it relates to common driveways is we're requiring um, you know, that there be a reciprocal easement agreement, that it be recorded on title, because a lot of times you'll get common driveways and people don't know that they're shared driveways and they start doing things on those driveways like parking in the driveways or blocking access to their neighbor in the back, and we're trying to ensure that we don't have those kinds of problems. Also, uh, for fire access, it's a twenty-five feet, I believe, wide. So if and when fire is required to have an access via a fire lane, it's a twenty-five foot wide drive. And that's a dedicated fire lane that has to be stenciled and with the signage, no parking at any time kind of thing. So I think we took it a step further with fire, just to make sure that we didn't leave anything out as it relates to fire life safety.
Thank you.
Um, yeah. Yes, of course, uh, Chairman, I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner Okazaki, it looks like you maybe have a question?
Yeah, I, Director Hamilton, you know, I, I started reading this background at the very beginning and, and I, I feel that I was misled by reading the uh, definition. Uh, when you talk about the uh, what it allows, you talk about one lot can be divided into a maximum of two lots. So one, ten thousand square foot lot, you know, it could be divided into six thousand and four thousand square foot lots. So maximum size of the new lot is twelve hundred, so anyway, uh, I, I guess you can't do that, but the maximum uh, lot this is only twelve hundred, but this, the, the fourth bullet says each lot can now have two units. So if I own the ten thousand square foot lot to start out with, and I was divided in, I divided into a eighty-four hun- uh, eighty, eight hundred and twelve hundred square foot lots, I could build two units in each one of those two lots. I, I'm, I know I'm misreading it, but it could be re-read that I could actually have four four units almost, although I can't have four, uh, four, four, I guess, I cannot have two eight hundred units in a twelve hundred square foot lot. But I could at least have three lot, uh, three three units in, in a ten thousand square foot lot, if I follow the logic of the way you talk, talk here, so I think you need some sort of a clarification.
Okay, Commissioner, I, I appreciate that feedback, you're, you're bringing up an example and I touched on the mapping that we haven't had time to do. Uh, we know there's five thousand square foot lots in the city, there's nine thousand square foot lots in the city, and the example you brought up is a good one. Now, that's where access and some of these other setbacks are going to come into play as well. Uh, but yes, conceivably, you could take a five thousand square foot lot and you know, take forty percent of that and create a separate lot via a lot split, you're absolutely correct. And what I would like to do going forward is to be able to map that out so that everyone can see just what this looks like potentially, we can't capture every scenario. But you're right, I had a good conversation with our senior planner about the smaller lots in this community. And that's where I, I think you would see the most impact, um, frankly. Um, but you're, you're correct in your assessment, but we can look at what we can do to better define that or make it clearer.
Commissioner Okazaki, is that your only question before I move on?
No, I don't, I have no other question at this time.
Okay, um, I have three questions and then we can open this up to public comments. Um, I'm just wondering, when is this due to be? Uh, when is this due? Uh, when is this due? Do we have to have all of this reviewed and signed by December thirty first? Is that the goal?
Com- Commission Chair, the, the, the strategy here uh in, in full disclosure is to uh take. Uh this, this ordinance and uh the resolution to City Council. Um also, I believe we've talked to the city attorney about doing an interim, an urgency ordinance as well. So it's three pieces. It's the urgency ordinance. The draft ordinance is, you know, as may be modified by Planning Commission tonight and the resolution. So that even if we get to a point where the actual ordinance itself is not adopted by council. Till, say, the second meeting in December or pushed out into January, we still have, and Steve, you could help me on this if, if, if you think I need it. We still have the protection of having an interim ordinance in place that could then overlap with the, the adoption of the ordinance. So. Our goal is to have some protections in place, certainly by January one, uh to the maximum extent possible.
Um and a follow up to that is just our. I'm assuming that the Planning Commission, once we give you our notes, we are not going to have an opportunity. To review that everything that we have discussed has been um implemented into the document. In the, in the manner that we have all agreed, like, are we going to be able to review it again?
Um, given the timeline at this point, no, but certainly my job is to make sure I capture all of your comments and suggestions. And make sure that that gets forwarded on to City Council, because they're inviting your input. They need your input, and obviously your input is important and critical. So that all of your input will be shared with them, and to the extent that it can be incorporated in the ordinance. So long as there's no substantive change between what you're looking at and what the council sees, uh it's possible. So I will share all of your comments with the City Council.
Thank you. Um with regards to the three attachments to the resolution. Um, I do not know if this is accurate or not, but were those made public at all prior to? The seventy two hours when the agenda was made public to the um. That like, has anybody, has anybody from the public been able to review this in the same way that they have the ordinances?
Uh, no, other than what would have been posted, uh you know, to comply with the seventy two hours, the, the uh requirements. These were literally works in progress up to and including the, the Friday that uh everything had to get posted.
Okay, um the only reason I ask is obviously we have a very engaged community and. To ensure that these documents really do uh include, you know, everything that. Our current design guidelines, you know, and just doing that uh verification, that double check. Um, the seventy two hours might not have been enough for everyone. Um and I just want to make a point of that as there may be pushback. Um. My last question, and it goes back to something that Commissioner Brody had brought up, and it's the restriction of the. Uh, the affidavit to live onsite for three years. Um, my question with regards to that, and I don't think that there's going to be an answer, but I, and I wanted to bring it up now just because it was brought up previously. Many of the homes in San Marino are owned by L L Cs that include. In some cases upwards of a hundred different investors. If that is the case, who is the resident that needs to live onsite for three years? And again, I don't think that that's necessarily a question that can be answered. But I think that it's something very important as we have the stipulation that they have to live there. When you have a conglomerate who has purchased it, if you have somebody like Zillow who's bought it, if you have somebody like Calpers who's bought it. Or another, you know, um, uh pension fund, which I know is the trend right now. Ha- you know, who become, who is technically the owner that would then have to reside?
I don't have an answer. I don't have an answer for you on that. That's a great question. I, I would imagine. And I'll work with the city attorney on this, because one of the things that immediately comes to mind when you raise that question is. Would you, what if this overseas owner or offsite owner hires a management company? I, I, you know, I don't even know if that passes the test, but we need to look at all those different scenarios.
Well, and I mean, I would just say that it, it would not for me. Um. I think that as my colleagues have heard me say before, I think that um. It's very important for me that people uh who are. Making changes to our community have an investment in our community. And so uh. Uh, an LLC does not meet those requirements. An LLC does not have kids in our school. An LLC is not using our commercial district. And I think that that's a. Well, I don't have to, I, I won't go on about that. I just think that it's something that as we. Look at this, and especially if we are going to have a provision about an owner living there, who then becomes the, the responsible owner. Um, so if there aren't any further questions, and again, to hopefully move this along. I would like to open this up to pub- oh, sorry.
I'm sorry, I just real briefly, uh that raises a very interesting enforcement question. I think the intent of the law. Is that there be an individual owner and not a conglomerate, but we'll take a look at that. Uh and I'll discuss that with Mr. Hamilton as we go forward. Uh there will probably be some enforcement issues that we may address generally through the city's general enforcement provisions. And we'll take a look at those code sections as well to make sure that they are strong enough to deal with the, the. Issues that we might have to deal with with regard to these type of developments. I did want to point out that I downloaded the PowerPoint that Mr. Hamilton sent me, so that is in the chat box.
Yes.
And hopefully, individuals who are participating can download that and they can look at it. Um, and if anyone has any questions that, you know, you can let us know. And then the, the last point, I wanted to add. Um, something um to what. Mr. Hamilton was saying about the, the procedure that we're engaging, and it's really a belt and suspenders approach to make sure that we have something in place. By January first, so there will be an urgency ordinance along with the. Uh a regular re- a first reading of the ordinance, and then there'll be a second reading. And that way, if someone were to challenge the urgency ordinance, we've got a, 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 a regular ordinance that is. Uh going to go through the normal process of adoption. So again, it's a belt and suspenders approach. We should, you know, our goal is to have everything in place by January one, and then a, a regular ordinance would take effect shortly thereafter.
Thank you. Um, so with that, I would like to open it uh for public comments. Please, um you can use the raise hand feature uh in Zoom, or you can uh. Put a comment in the chat, uh and Director Hamilton will um read it off to us. Um again, due to limitations in time and knowing that this is potentially going to be a very long night. Um, I will be restricting comments as close as I can to three minutes. Please try to be concise, state your name, where you live. Um. And if you are making duplicate comments from somebody else, we would just really encourage that, that you don't and you just. Say that you concur with the other people who've made comments. Um, and I believe. We will begin, Director Hamilton, there was a comment that you wanted to read into the record. Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Uh this comes from a Dr. Romani. Uh and I'll just read it directly. He sent it to me via email. Um, to preserve the high quality and unique character of our city. And to protect the value, livability, aesthetics, and historic nature of our neighborhoods. And also to assert maximum amount of local control allowed under new state of California legislation. I request the city make the following conditions. Number one. Any new residential construction under the proposed ordinance is prohibited. And any historic district that is identified in the city histor- city's historic resources survey. Which was adopted by the City Council in twenty twenty. Number two, any removal of a mature or heritage or oak tree is prohibited. For new ordinance or, under that ordinance, or for new construction under that ordinance. As San Marino has a tree preservation ordinance in place, all new construction under that ordinance must comply with the existing tree ordinance. Number three, all new construction under that ordinance is required to have the property owner live in one of the two units for. Minimum of three years, and biannual inspections are required to be allowed by the city to ensure owner complies with live-in requirement. Number four, all new construction under this ordinance is required to have an affordability covenant for thirty years minimum. And to be affordable, all rental rates are required to include moderate as well as low to very low income levels. As determined by the County of Los Angeles. Number five, front yard setback of new construction under that ordinance are required to comply with city's existing objective standards. For existing seven residential area districts. Specific measurement varies by district. As you know, we have seven districts in, in our R one zone. Number six, each unit of new construction under that ordinance is required to have minimum one enclosed parking space on property. And no overnight parking, street parking allowed in the R one zones. Number seven, and this is a lengthy list of suggestions. All new construction under that ordinance required to be L E E, L E E, LEED certified, to have solar panels. And all electric appliances, no natural gas powered to reduce the environmental impact and help the city meet its climate crisis goals. Number eight, if owned by the same property owner, any adjacent site cannot be subdivided under that ordinance or otherwise. Lastly, number nine, any new residential construction be limited to a maximum of eight hundred square feet total. Which includes all attached solid roof areas, whether air, whether air conditioned or not. In other words, whether conditioned space or not. That concludes the nine suggestions and comments.
Thank you so much. Um, were there any other pu- public comments you received that need to be entered into the record or read into the record or? That was it?
None.
Um, so at this time, I would like to open it for public comments. Uh, yes, um, I'm sorry, is your last, is, is your last name?
Peter Wong.
Peter Wong. Thank you.
You. I want to thank Commissioner, all of you and Director Hamilton for taking the initiative of protecting our city. Um, I reached out to Assembly Member Ed Chow. And he has his Legislative Director in Sacramento reach out to Pro Tem Akis Office, who is the author of S B nine, to see if there is any. Ready answer for many concerns of local communities. The answer is that they have nothing to share. And then, um, the office also reached out to E C D, and I was told by the um. Leadership Director of H O's office that it is in the making of coming out with a document. So it's very apparent that we communities have to protect ourselves. And there are many good comments made tonight, and I understand it is an ongoing process. But I would urge all of us to at least have the best of our ability, put up measurable, objective. Clauses and measures so that we can at least fend off some totally unexpected or even unintentional damage that may come our way. Um. I'll be continuing sharing further insights to the extent possible, and I want to again. Show my appreciation to all of you who is doing all this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, is there anybody else who would like to make a public comment? Uh, to Mr. Um Quan who. Uh, put a comment in the chat, the slides are the attachment that um the city attorney Steve McEwen. Has added to the chat box. So it's a document that you would need to open. It is not being uh shared uh via screen. It's a document. I hope that helps.
Yeah, thank you, Chair, and I, and, and it's one of the, it's, it's something where uh you'd have to scroll up in the chat box to find it. Because the city attorney uploaded it uh fairly early on in the chat process.
Uh, Ms. Nakamura, I see you have your hand raised. Could, um, could you please unmute yourself?
Thank you for that prompt. Um, I just wanted to thank everybody. I've been um. Aware of this issue for a while and um just very alarmed. Uh, with the repercussions of what, what could happen if we don't put these um. New ordinances and resolutions in place. So anyway, just quickly, just a few things. Overall, I'm very pleased with. Um, everything that's um in the ordinances and resolution. So. Um, I just wanted to comment that I believe it was the city of L A um has. The, the clock, the shot clock starting for the three years uh that the owner lives on property. At the time when the o- occupa- occupancy permit is um, um issued. Um, so I'd like to see that if that isn't already in, in the document. Um, also, I had recently attended, I think it was a livable California meeting, and they were saying something. Regarding the parking lot situation where they were saying that. Um. People could make their property a car share property. So, so therefore, they would eliminate one of the parking spots that are required normally. So I, I guess. You know, we do the best we can in trying to figure out all these little loopholes, but. Uh, that was something I heard that I thought, oh, my gosh, I mean, really, you're going to make your, your property into a ride uh car share property? So anyway, that, that, I'm just putting that out there. Um, overall, I'm, I'm really happy with what I'm seeing, and um, yes, we do need to get this out. And um voted on by, I mean, everything done by uh December thirty first of this year. Uh, so it's in place by January first of twenty twenty-two. So anyway, thank you again.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else that would like to make a comment? I am not seeing anyone. So uh I guess. Uh with that, I will close the public comment portion of this um agenda item. And Commissioners, we can start deliberating and sharing our comments. Um, as usual, I think that the best way to do this is to let uh. Each individual, e- each of us speak independently, individually, independently, and then we can open it up for. Uh more cross conversation between the five of us, if that is um good with all of you, and um, I guess, uh. Vice Chair Brody, why don't, why don't we start with you? I don't, sorry.
That's fine, that's fine. Uh, yeah, uh, just to give you a bit of a background, and I'll try and get through this real quick. Uh. Uh. I'm very familiar with uh, uh with real estate, especially residential rentals. Uh throughout L A County, Arizona, and, and Nevada. Uh, and uh. I, I am really concerned that this has been poorly written. Uh, it seeks to accomplish a goal. Uh, without any evidence whatsoever that there's a, even a ghost of a chance of that happening, but the uh. The corollary effect of what they're doing will destroy the R one zone, which means destroying the quality of life for a lot of people. Uh, I got, I've got a, a couple of points. First of all, uh, let me quickly mention that we need to uh. Delete in the whereas sections, all of those sickle font type statements. Where we're blessing and joining in to the uh, well, I'll term it. As the idiocy that went on in Sacramento. Uh, it's not progressive, it's not a positive change. It's frankly stupid. And uh, anything that we do is to comply with the mandates of state law. We're an executive body, we have an obligation to do so, and we should. Uh, but. Uh, I, I think it's unnecessary and superfluous to start blessing what happened. Uh, in Sacramento with S B nine. Uh, secondly, uh, we need to get into. More specifics with regard to the handling of, say, a duplex uh that is put forth. What happens if the person uh doesn't live there for three years? We need to have some penal effects on that, uh should it occur. And I'm not talking about a slap on the wrist, I'm talking about um a uh, a misdemeanor, which we can do. Uh, also, uh with regard to the low income unit that's required under the code. Uh, I think we, we've got to address the reality of the low income stooge that gets in there. And I don't mean stooge by defining him, but by defining the person that puts him up. As a qualified low income recipient and merely uses him or her. Uh, to sublease out that unit at a much higher price. We have got to deal with leases and subleases that can certainly uh come to pass with regard to that. Uh, on the uh two hundred square feet of private open space, we've got to define that. Uh, as being not visible uh by neighbors or the adjoining unit. Uh, and that has got to be key. I, I'd like to see something on flag lots where we prohibit that type. Where we prohibit that type of activity and, uh, that's going to be, I think, extremely important. And, uh, restricting on-street parking. Uh, is extremely important, and we've got to really highlight that. Uh, one car for one unit is fine. But, uh, really do we, uh. Uh, the reality is, and I'll tell you where that comes from in a moment. The reality is there will probably be more than just one driver per unit. Uh, in the duplex. In other words, more than two, uh, two vehicles there. So if we restrict that, all of a sudden. We make it not all that feasible, um, for a duplex to exist. There's an interesting, uh, scenario with regard to the L A municipal code, which I'm familiar with. You got ninety-one point one oh two seven. And ninety-one point one two oh eight. Which, uh, very poorly written, but it would allow. And I'm not, I'm not kidding when it, when it says this, it would allow fifteen people. To live in an eight hundred square foot unit. Fifteen, one five. The, uh, F H A. Says that it's dependent upon the bedrooms. Uh, the L A municipal code says it's defend, dependent upon the square footage of the unit. Uh, the F H A says it's two plus one for each bedroom. So if you have a two-bedroom, one bath. You could easily have six people living there according to the F H A. Me, meanwhile. Under the L A municipal code, they allow fifteen. And you could check on that code numbers, ninety-one point one oh two seven and ninety-one point one two oh eight. What's been happening, and, and I have got a lot of clients who are dealing with this situation. Is that you have, uh, two-bedroom, one-bath, two-bedroom, two-bath, uh, normally rent out for. Uh, upwards of two thousand bucks, sometimes a little more than that. Uh, and, uh, Joe Blow comes in there, he signs the lease. And lo and behold, within a short period of time, there are about six or seven people living there. And they're all coming in and coming and going, essentially becomes a flop house. And, and this is something that must be dealt with. Uh, it is not the solution for affordable housing. It's not the solution to take people off the street. By the way, there's a lot of, uh, vacant housing available in Los Angeles County. None of that has been dealt with. That, that situation has been avoided. Why? I don't know. But there is a lot of vacant housing that, uh, could provide, uh, some, uh, respite. For the, uh, housing crisis and, uh, people look the other way on that. I, I, by people, I mean the people in Sacramento. Uh, I guess the, uh, the lobby money has paid off. Uh, again, those are my thoughts. I'm very negative about this, uh, very, uh. Pessimistic about, uh, the future unless this S B nine gets overturned. There are some movements to overturn it. And I, I hope they succeed.
Thank you very much, Vice Chair Brody. Um, Commissioner Wright, are you ready?
Well, it's, it's just way, there's way too much to. Go through page by page and, um, nitpick it. I'm not gonna do that. Um, the, but just, I think my overall feeling about this is I keep going back to what, um. Our interim director said, and I tend to agree with, that it's just highly unlikely. That anybody is gonna build based on this ordinance. I just think there may be a couple of pockets in our, in our community where it would make sense. And I'm talking about financial sense, but I just, I think it would just be really difficult when you look at all the things we've put in place. Where, and I'm kind of combining the lot split and the, uh, the duplex in a way, but you have some provisions that require sixty-foot frontage. You require two hundred square feet of open space for each unit, two eight hundred square foot, um, units, houses, whatever you want to call them. That's it, eight hundred square feet maximum. And I'd like us to make that clear every time we say outlays, I think we need to say maximum. Um, you're gonna have to have some kind of access, that's gonna take part of your lot, a driveway, some kind of access. You got, you're gonna have certain setbacks that you probably are gonna have to, uh, comply with. You're gonna have to be one owner occupied, one's gonna be affordable, which. Really, if we, and I agree with Vice Chair Brody, if we enforce that correctly, uh, would really reduce the profitability of it. Um, I just, I, so if that's our goal, and, and I, that's what I really am asking our colleagues. You know, when I look at this ordinance and I look at our role as recommending to the council, uh, policy and ordinance, but the policy. Um, not nitpicking, like, you know, I like to do, um, you know, i- is that our goal? I mean, maybe it is. And if it's our goal, I think this ordinance has done a really good job of it. I really do. I think if that's our goal. I would like to encourage families. That's my thing. If I could talk about something that I would like to see. Change, if you want to call it that, in San Marino, it's attracting families. Would this attract families? Well, I kind of hope not, you know, eight hundred unit. Uh, I mean, I lived in, I think it was, uh, about a thousand. Square foot house for my first eight, nine years of life. Uh, there were five of us and. You know, you gotta get along now. And we're so unbelievably lucky here, unbelievably lucky here for the, the space that we have. Um, and I think that's one of the things that, that draws people to San Marino. We were just in the L A Times, did you see it, talking about affluent areas? Um, and saying what makes San Marino unique is its big lots. And, um, I just think, so I don't know that this would attract families, which would be my goal, uh, or at least one of them. So I think we need to, to think about that as a commission. What is our goal? And if it's to, to limit the effect of S B nine and S B thirty-five, I think this has done a good job, frankly. Um, and like I said, just as far as nitpicking, I just be sure that it's, it makes it. Makes sense that it's a maximum of eight hundred. Um, I was a little bit concerned when I saw that the decision on the lot splits is not appealable. It's final, uh, by the director, and I kind of wondered, I, that was one of my questions I had that I forgot to ask. Wondered why we're not allowing that to be appealable? Is that some of this ministerial kind of idea? I, I mean. I- is that it? Okay, because, nah, that made me a little uncomfortable. Um, there's also just a little nitpicking. On, uh, twenty-three point oh two point thirty-three, D one, did not make sense to me. No setback shall be required for an existing structure or a structure constructed in the same location into the same. Dimensions as an existing structure. Well, if you're already. It, it, that made no sense to me. So you just need to look, I, I think that, I think that was incorrectly written because you're no longer a structure. So I don't know how you can comply with that. Um, but, and then the only other thing I would say, and maybe the main thing I want to say. Is since I do think it's gonna be unlikely or, or difficult to pencil out based on this ordinance. That's what makes me very uncomfortable recommending this service, is that we haven't, we haven't penciled that out. We haven't looked at different scenarios. We don't really know the impact of this ordinance. And for me, that is extremely troubling. Um, I can, I can sit here all I want and say, well, that's what I think is gonna happen, but I am. Absolutely, as you all know better than anybody, no expert. So, um, if there's anything that really troubles me about this ordinance. Um, is that we really don't know the impact. We haven't penciled it out for lack of a better term. We haven't analyzed the actual impact based on certain types of, of, of lots that we have in our, in our city. So I don't know how helpful that was, but that's my two cents.
Thank you. It was helpful to me. Um. What? No. Um. Commissioner Okazaki, would you like to give your input?
I tell you, uh. You know, contrary to, uh, what Howard Brody said, that this, this subject is. Brand new to me in a sense of not knowing, I guess. What, what's been going on? And when I read the, uh. The report, staff report and saw the, uh. The bill, Senate bill coming through, I, I noticed. Organizations that supported it, but I also noticed that. So many cities, including South Pasadena, Pasadena and San Marino oppose this bill. So Sacramento knew that all these local jurisdictions were opposed to it, and yet. The majority of senators and assembly folks. Supported. I'm very surprised that Sacramento. Doesn't seem to respect the local jurisdictions and the people that they represent. I. Don't know who they listen to, but they certainly did not listen to the local politicians and local. Uh. Homeowners associations who oppose this bill. And, uh. And in terms of, uh, you know, which communities would benefit. With this kind of, uh, bill, I, I, I would think that you still have to have a, uh, sort of a. Uh. Property value that, that's kind of the low end. I, I, it doesn't make sense for me to, to s- I, I just can't see. A homeowner building something like this, just as, uh, uh. Commissioner Wright said, I, I just don't see. Somebody in San Marino building something like this, uh, eight hundred square foot. Uh. Affordable housing unit. And splitting their lot to do that. Uh. I. And I realize that we have to follow the state law and come up with this. Uh, ordinance. And, and, and in some respect, I guess, an ordinance to, uh. To, to protect our community, uh, and the quality of life that we want in our community. And while we moved in San Marino in the first place, this ordinance helps to do that because it makes it kind of. Difficult, uh, in some sense. But, but I think, uh, uh, I think Howard implied that, that this works going on in the community statewide. For possibly overturning this state law, uh, by the voters of California. I think, uh, he said the number seventy percent. Maybe there's even more than that. Uh, of people that oppose what Sacramento did to. Local control, uh, in terms of land use and, uh, zoning. That, that's really important. For our communities. And like I said, all these cities oppose it. Uh, not just us in the San Gabriel Valley. So anyway, uh. We have to do what we have to do right now at, at this moment and move this along. And I think staff did a good job in, in, uh, trying to protect our city. Uh, from a potential disaster. Uh, having this kind of a, a facility. I mean, I support affordable housing personally. But it, uh, the way Sacramento did it, I don't think is the right way, in my opinion. That concludes my comment for now.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Dustin.
Okay, I apologize in advance to my colleagues, but I just can't figure out any way to do this other than. Um, start at the top and roll through it. I, I just took the PDF document and I highlighted and typed comments, so. Uh, I'll try to be as quick as I can. I just, uh, to start off with, I wanted to say, I, I strongly agree with Howard. Um. The whereas language, that just really sticks in my craw to hear that, and I, I think it needs. His, his recommendation is right on the money. It needs to be just. Very blunt and straight to the point. We're doing this because we have to do it, and that's it. Uh, and don't, uh, there, there is no evidence that this is going to impact. Affordable housing, the availability of affordable housing, and I don't think we should. Promote that idea un- until we have some evidence of that. I also, um, strongly agree with, uh. Commissioner Wright, uh, in her fear of the fact that we haven't sort of penciled out samples of this on, on. Example lots throughout the community. It really scares me that we. That there could just be a lot of hidden things out there that we don't know, and I, I would urge that we do that as quickly, uh, as possible. Um. Uh, one thing I noticed going through this is, uh, it says that, um. Developments. Prohibited, they're prohibited from being located in an earthquake fault zone. And that's the language of S B nine. However, I noticed in our language in the ordinance, it says. Well, if it's in an earthquake fault zone, we're not gonna allow it unless they comply with these more stringent seismic construction standards. Why are we doing that? S B nine doesn't require us to do that. It doesn't require us to give them that option or that exception. It just says. They're prohibited from being located in that thing. So I, in fact, the way the or- our, our ordinance is written. I think it doesn't comply with S B nine because, uh, it's finding a way to allow it to be in an earthquake fault zone when. Clearly, the language says prohibits, and it doesn't give any exception. So I think that should be revisited. Um, I, I don't know, it was hard for me to find, uh, samples of earthquake zone maps, but I, 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 from what I saw on the. Uh, I believe it was. Uh, where is it? Uh, the California Department of Conservation is the only place I could find an earthquake zone map. And, you know, there's a fairly wide swath of San Marino that is covered by the Raymond Hill Fault Zone. Uh. You could conceivably prohibit any of this kind of development in that, in, in quite a few, uh, areas of the city because of that. Uh, and I don't see why we would make it easier for people by giving them the option of upgrading their construction, uh, to. Deal with that. Um. Let me scroll through here. Uh. Oh, yeah, on, um. And I don't have any way of referencing this other than looking at the page numbers for the entire PDF document. So this is page thirty-one of seventy-one. Uh, section D. Any construction of a two-unit residential development shall conform to all property development regulations. Of the underlying district in R one. Zone in which the property is located. So I think that was going back to what you said, uh. Director Hamilton about, uh, fencing and things like that. Uh, I did take a closer look at the city ordinance while. Uh, the meeting was going on. Uh, I was incorrect. Vinyl fencing is not allowed, uh, under that. But there are other things that I think. Could be put in here, uh. Specifics, um, you know, vinyl shutters, um, vinyl windows, uh, vinyl gutters. Um, I, I'm not sure. How that stuff can get, um, stipulated. I don't know, it sounds to me like if it comes, if they come to the counter with it, you can't say no. So it has to be in the ordinance to begin with. So I would just encourage. And my fear is, is that I have a whole list of things that I could come up with, that I would say should be just non-starters. You should just prohibit them. Directly in the ordinance. But, you know, it's gonna take a long time to come up with a list like that. A- and, you know, I understand that there's some urgency of this. It needs to get out. By January one. My concern is that we'll get it out the door January one, and then we're never gonna come back and clean it up. Uh, so my comment here, I guess, is more for city council, but please don't. Be satisfied with this. You gotta come back and revisit this. Um. Let's see, oh, um. Oh, that, that same paragraph that I just quoted on page thirty-one of seventy-one, uh, section D, that is under the. Um. The two-unit development section. There is no analogous language. To that under the two units under an urban lot split section. I'm not, I'm confused by that. Why would it be important to have it in one but not for the other? It seems like it should be consistent. Um, so I, that needs to be looked at. Um. Let's see. Oh, I have a question, um. You know, on, on, uh, this is on page forty of seventy-one. Twenty-two point oh six point oh six oh, application of objective standards. And again, I don't expect this to be provided right now, but maybe if you could. The, if Director Hamilton could shoot me an email with this, the objective zoning standards, the objective subdivision standards. Uh. I, I'm having a hard time, and it's also talking about, um, development design standards and configuration standards. I, I'm not really seeing that clearly in, in the document. So I was wondering if you could just give me some references to that where I can look at that, uh, but cite like specific page numbers so I can, I can find it easier. Um. Let's see, uh, oh, I had a comment about the three-year residency requirement. Um, so I can think of a situation where the owner. Really ought to sort of be given a, a reconsideration of that. You know, let's say you have an elderly landowner, they know that they do this lot split, the, the builder units or whatever. They're living in. They're living in one of the units happily for, let's say, six months, and they come down with some sort of serious medical condition. They need to be um transferred to a skilled nursing facility. And they need the income from their unit in order to help cover their medical expenses, are we gonna tell that person no? Just something to think about, I I really don't see how that that whole. Three-year residency thing is gonna be enforceable, I mean, even with inspections. We're gonna do rummage around in somebody's sock drawer and see if the socks fit their feet, I mean, it just it just makes no sense to me. I had a question on, uh this is page forty-eight of seventy-one. Section two. Uh it's talking about the following uh design standards. For two-unit residential development, if the parcel does not include an existing single-family residence. Or there's an existing residence and it's gonna be demolished, it says. Facades need to be treated with the same massing layout and typical architecture features as the front facade. On the existing structure prior to app- to the application, so. If if I understanding this correctly, if you have a lot with a Spanish colonial house on it. And you're gonna. Tear it down and put two eight hundred square foot units on or whatever you're gonna do. Does that mean that now both those units have to be Spanish colonial in? Their layout types of architectural features, et cetera, even though the house that was there is no longer going to be there? Am I understanding that correctly?
I believe that Commissioner, that is the intent, so that you're not introducing a completely.
That that makes sense. And then just below that, it talks about roofs. What kind of control are we gonna have, I mean, here in our objective standards, it just simply says simulated wood shake is allowed. Uh as a substitute, but it doesn't really talk, how are we gonna control? What what type of material they choose, what manufacturer, are we are we gonna be able to do that at the counter?
Uh Commissioner, that's that's a good question, uh I've got in front of me the pre-approved roof materials, colors and application exhibit. But that's a couple of years old, that probably needs to be revisited by the DRC. Uh but we could certainly make reference to any anything that's been adopted by the council or the commission as a resolution. Could certainly put that in there.
Okay, so that that would be my recommendation is that. For these units, I think the objective design standards should specify. That they can only use materials off the pre-approved list, um you know. Other conditions that we don't accept in normal construction should be specified in the objective standards. No ninety-degree edge rate tiles on the edges of roofs. Uh if you're using, you know, clay tiles on a Spanish colonial style house, we do not allow S tiles. They have to be the half-barrel tile, that that all should be stipulated in here. I'm just curious, um was there any consideration to? Maybe for all this type of construction saying. If you're if you're gonna have, unless. Let me rephrase that, except in the case where there's an existing home that sort of leads the design. Style that that fits in the neighborhood, so was there any consideration to basically picking a few? Styles off of our residential design guidelines that would be appropriate for smaller units like this, like minimal traditional. Uh ranch style and Spanish colonial revival and say, you have to pick one of those three styles. And then we could give them specific. Hardline standards when they're building, if you're building minimal traditional, you can only use these roof tiles. No ninety the ninety-degree edging, if you're gonna build, you know, a ranch style, the the roof pitch has to be this, if you're gonna build Spanish colonial. Uh you can't do smooth stucco, um things like that, um that's another thing that I just am popping off the top of my head here. A a a design element that we don't allow anywhere in the city is that rough knockdown stucco finish. Um that, you know, looks like a Taco Bell. That should be in the objective standards for any construction in uh the commercial zone or anyplace else. We we that's just a a no-brainer that we don't wanna see stuff like that. Let's see, yeah, oh, just going back, you know, I would restrict, you know, our our design guidelines talk about not putting mixed color. Tile on roofs or mixed color palettes, that that could easily be put as an objective standard. You can't pick a blend of colors to put on a roof, you have to pick a color. Let's see, uh oh, I had a question. Okay, uh again, I don't have a page number here, so uh fifty-one of seventy-one. Uh section C, uh primary entryways shall match between each unit. And incorporate four of the following elements, now if I look at element two and three, the first element two says door recessed at least three inches from the building facade. Element three says door recessed at least two feet from the building facade to create a covered porch or landing area. Um does that mean they can choose which of those they want?
That to to my knowledge, that's not the intent, we'll we'll take a look at that standard and and clean it up, yes.
Uh and then um this is more pertinent to uh. Residential mixed use in the in the C one zone, I I couldn't get a sense of this just looking. Reading the the materials, but. Is it possible to prevent balconies from projecting over the public right of way? Could we say, could we put a hard line in there saying balconies must be recessed into the facade?
Uh to answer your question, we certainly could, but again, going back to objective standards, we'd have to be able to quantify that. But certainly we could do it, but we didn't have to stipulate, you know, the depth of that balcony, the width of that balcony. We could also have a prohibition against encroaching over the public right of way, absolutely.
That that would just be my recommendation of the council that they consider that. That balcony shouldn't be allowed to project out over the sidewalk, they should be recessed into the building. And then, uh let's see, uh City Attorney answered that question, oh, uh the lighting section on the um. Construction in the C one zone, uh residential construction in C one zone. You know, I noticed he had a document there that has all these examples of, you know, this is good, this is bad, this is good, this is bad with the shielding and all that. Uh I just, I didn't know whether you're familiar, but there is a um. Yeah, let me see if I can find this here, is the international, oh, where is it? The International Dark Sky Association has uh. A program where they give a seal of approval to light fixtures that meet their. Standards for preserving dark skies to minimize glare, reduce light trespassing on, you know, adjacent property, and they don't pollute the night sky. I would say that that might be worth considering putting that in as just a blanket statement, any exterior lighting fixture has to be. One that has that seal of approval from the IDA. Um and I'll just take this opportunity to say that this is probably something that the city needs to look at. For the entire city, not just the commercial zone, we should have a lighting ordinance that. Um controls lighting in this city so that we are not polluting the skies with light. And then lastly, uh there was a question on um outdoor lighting exemptions. Um so I noticed there, this is page sixty-nine of seventy-one. I'm getting to the end, Commissioner Wright, so bear with me. Holiday lighting. Um again, this is just sort of an issue of enforcement, um I mean, it's something that really bugs me because if you look at that. Uh San Marino Security Building, which is already an example of residential. Units in C one zone. They have these like little LED strip lights underneath all the balcony railings. And there are these multicolored LEDs, so he can dial them into whatever color range he wants. Red and green for Christmas and orange for Halloween, blue for, you know, God knows what, it it looks horrible. And it's a perfect example of why, you know, you need to have some control, but. How are you gonna enforce that, holiday lighting, what holiday qualifies? I mean, um who's gonna make that determination of what's a valid holiday and what's not? You're gonna put up the holiday lights and how long can they be up for the holiday, who's gonna police when they get taken down? So I just, I I see that as a, just a a very um difficult thing to try and um enforce. I think that's all I have.
Thank you, um. Well, I guess it's my turn, and I have quite a lot of paperwork in front of me, plus I've been taking copious notes, um. The first thing I wanted to do similar to uh my fellow commissioners is just to go on record and say that um. I am in complete opposition of SB nine. I do not think it is based in fact, I do not think that it is gonna help. Any of our unhomed communities, I personally believe that it is. Racist, but I won't go, I don't have to go there against our brown and black communities. And uh along the lines of what Commissioner Brody was talking about, we actually have. A major vacant housing property uh problem, including in our own city. And uh you know, and so this is. Clearly something that was just done to placate developers, in my opinion. So, that being said, there are a few things that um. I noticed, and you'll have to bear with me, because again, I do have quite a lot of notes, I'm gonna I'm gonna start with just some notes that I wrote, and then I'll probably flip through the document to. Bring out some specifics. Um the first thing that I wanted to note, and I did do research with regards to what City of LA has done and other communities have done. Um where we talk about the um the the. Not being able to happen in historic areas. We have a blanket comment that it's like pursuant to the city or county ordinance. Um LA City uh has it written differently where it. It allows for our city survey because it is done by a. You know, uh. I I don't know what the proper term is, but you know, it's done by a verifiable third party. Who can confirm all of this data, and the City of LA is saying, because in order to make the historic survey like an ordinance, it's a. Tenure process, it's this very long involved thing which we haven't done. But we did ratify our historic survey, we have identified historic different uh districts. And there are other communities that are using the verbiage to protect their historic districts from SB nine. And I think we need to look into that and um. Uh Director Hamilton, if you don't have, if you haven't seen examples of this, I'm happy to send you the one from City of LA. But it is, it is just specific ver- uh verbiage that includes the survey. Of documented historic areas and properties, blah 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 blah. And that they're done by, you know, a licensed professional. Um other things that I noticed from the City of Pasadena that I think might be important for us to uh take on is that there's a limit to a one-story height limit. Um there is a requirement of two mature trees being planted or remaining. Um the lot split must include a central courtyard. Uh with regards to the lead requirements, um I wanna make sure, I know that platinum is the. The highest level you can get, and I'm thrilled to see it in there. Um I wanna make sure that there is the requirement for gray water, all-electric appliances. Cool roof technologies. Um I'm assuming that because it is a state law that any new development has to have solar panels, that solar panels will be required per. A previous law. Um I also have concerns about the impervious. Area being at forty-five percent, I would like to see that lower. Um and I think that we need to make sure that what we are stating as what we're allowing is impervious areas. That it's not in violation of the lead platinum status. Because I have a feeling that they that be to be lead platinum, you have to have a lot more green space than not. So I would like us to use the lead platinum standards for impervious and not. Whatever historically we have done, especially since I know that this commission in general um is very much against. Impervious areas. Um I had. I had a lot of questions with regards to the setbacks that can be encroached as much as four feet. Um I think that we should write that setbacks have to be. Um compatible to the neighborhood. I don't know what else to say, I think it needs to be compatible to the neighborhood. Um and four feet i- is nowhere in existence in this town is, do we have a set, a front yard setback of four feet? Which is what the document called for, or said it can be at least that. I also want to know where that is measured from, there are some of our properties that do not have sidewalks, and so. Where does their property begin, and if it's four feet from the street, that is. Ridiculously unacceptable. There was mention about how the same owner cannot subdivide. Um the same owner cannot subdivide an adjacent site. Um I think that that is something that if it isn't in there, it should be. I would like for there to be a provision that all new um structures require earthquake bolting. Uh I also have a question, sorry, I have a lot of questions, but. Um only because I am a person who lives with my yard being completely adjacent to two different garages. Uh I didn't see any provisions about how. How does all of this fit into a garage, like, you know, an ADU on top of the garage and what kind of protection I would like a person like me would have? With a second-story garage or a. Garage being added to with a second story looking directly into my backyard, I didn't see any verbiage about that, and I'd like there to be some more clarification. Or restrictions on that. Hold on, let me just flip through this again, and I'll be done. There, the confusion for me about there was no more than twenty-five percent of the existing exterior structural wall shall be demolished to create a two-unit residential development. Unless the existing single-family resident has not been occupied by a tenant in the last three years. I mean, I guess that's just a tenant in general, because it seems very contrary to our comment that. An owner has to occupy it for three years, so I just want clarity with that. Mention the courtyard. I'm okay with thirty years, a lot of cities do fifty-five years with regards to how long a place must be maintained, it's affordable. So we may wanna consider that, I mentioned the verbiage about um the historic. Um Commissioner Dustin had brought this up, and I believe that it was on page thirty-one of seventy-one uh uh section D one. I think that, and or maybe Jerry brought, Commissioner Wright brought it up. I think that it says no setback shall be required for an existing structure, I think that maybe it should be no change in setback. Shall be required for an existing structure, I think that that those words might be missing. Um cuz it would be very weird otherwise. Uh we talked a lot about the residents um or the owner residing in the home for three years. Uh do 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 do. Sorry, uh I'm very, we have a tree preservation ordinance. Um there should be no removal of heritage established trees even with a tree removal per- permit. Um that would be in, that would be, that would have lack of compliance to our our tree preservation. And it says that in cases where an addition or new construction is being proposed, the property owner uh may not remove trees without obtaining a tree removal permit. I understand that's true, but I think we need to put something in there that like. We either need to put that, you know, heritage trees are not allowed to be removed, or we need to do what I had suggested is that with any new development. You must have a requirement of no less than two mature trees. Planted, not lost, whatever. Then the only other thing in the C one section and Commissioner Dustin brought this up as well, I think it's. Twenty-three dash oh three dot ten objective design standards, any new residential or mixed-use construction in the C one commercial zone. City Council to date has not decided to allow mixed use in the city. So please remove this because it does not exist, one exists. And it was essentially a clerical error is what I understand historically. Um but mixed use is not allowed, city council may decide to change that in the future, but at this point it is not. I would like any verbiage or any reference to mixed use be removed. I think that's it. This was, this is a beast, this is a beast. This was, this is a beast, this is a beast and I don't know what else to say about it. Um, and to be honest with you, I don't even know where we're supposed to go from here. Do we, is there a motion? Do we? And I, and I legitimately mean that, like, I don't like, do we move to, because I'm, I don't, nobody can move to approve the ordinance, we have too many revisions.
Well, just to end it forward with all of our comments?
My, my understanding was that we are, the ordinance, we are recommending either yay or nay to the council. And then the resolution, we are either approving or disapproving, is that not correct?
That, that is correct Chair, so the, the recommendation of staff would be that you would review and recommend the City Council adopt the proposed draft ordinance. With your comments considered, amending the municipal code to regulate two unit residential development in urban lot splits. And review and approve the draft, proposed draft resolution recommending the City Council adopt the three sets of design standards. Uh, I'll work with the city attorney to incorporate uh, all the comments that can be incorporated into the draft ordinance and resolution that don't substantially change it. Um, but certainly all your comments will be sent on to the council, but that is the recommendation.
I had a couple of things that came up from Chair Boyle's comments. I can't find it now, I've been frantically going through the document, but my understanding was our, or, or our language stipulates a ninety nine year term for the, the very low incomes.
I thought I read thirty.
No, it's, it's, yeah, ninety nine, I thought, I saw that.
It is.
Okay, I'm sorry, I just, I was so focused on the, the thirty from first date of, from date of first occupancy. And so maybe that means to be consistent, I don't, I don't know.
And, and to, and to speak to that, that, that staff's recommendation, I mean, there's, there's no, there's different standards. But what, what, from my perspective is if you put that kind of affordability covenant on our property, it's, if we said it wasn't going to pencil out, uh, in and of itself, it's definitely not going to do that with a nineteen year covenant, in my opinion. Because
Well, I like it.
So
Exactly, again, that's our purpose, then ninety nine is good.
I'm sorry, I forgot that I wanted to bring up one other thing that is not here nor there with regards to this particular ordinance. Um, it's just something I did want to mention as I was thinking about this. Again, no action needs to be taken, I'm just putting it out there. As we potentially see an increase in density in our community, I think we should take the lead of some of our neighboring communities like South Pass, Sierra Madre, that have, um, no smoking ordinances in public spaces. Um, we do not have that and it may just be something we would look, maybe could look into as we are looking at increase, as the potential of increased, uh, density.
Love that idea. Can I just do just a little nitpicking? You know I have to do at least a little. I didn't, and I just wanted to just, uh, tell the staff, just to look at twenty two point oh six, point oh sixty, there's several typos. And also you have two section sevens. So you're gonna have to change all those numbers at the end of your ordinance, which in my experience, a lot of people never catch. So I just pass that on to you, it's the kind of thing that people just don't ever look at. And then also colleagues, maybe you can help me with this because I'm now remembering that I did sort of struggle with the design standards for the residential uses in the C one zone, since it was talking about, you know, three stories and fifty units. And is that how we see our, you know, C one zone in the future?
Commissioner, if, if I may add, um, we could certainly revise that. We, since this document was, uh, literally, you know, from another community, we tried to adapt it. There were significantly higher densities actually in that document, we pulled them out. But in my experience, you're, you're never going to get more than, certainly you won't get to fifty, uh, you, uh, per acre, uh, with three stories, you, you know. So we could, we could take a look at that density, it, it was illustrative only, it wasn't to suggest that we're going to get there, because I don't think you would get there with three stories. Unless you did subterranean parking, in which case the land value has to be there to even justify that, but.
I guess I, my recommendation would just essentially to be remove any image of a three story building because we don't allow them.
Has to see this, I think we need to get this more consistent with our.
Yeah. Finding images that would just be more consistent with the potential revitalization of Huntington Drive. You know, but not, not put into somebody's mind the goal. You know. So I guess, I mean, I guess what's next is a, a motion, I will say I'm a little bit, I mean, I'm a little bit hesitant in approving the resolution without seeing it, only because I am the person who has to ultimately sign it. Um, so I'm not, I don't, I, I don't know what to do about that, like, I don't know if we commissioners can have a really quick meeting sometime before the end of the year, you know, before this goes to City Council to just review the document and like say that we still all agree with this, you know, I, you know, with all of our comments, I, I, I don't know, I'm throwing that out there just as a means that it's.
Are we meeting in December?
We never, we never do. And I know that I'm throwing out there more work for us, but I, I don't know how you guys feel, I just, and I don't know if staff can make that possible, but in, you know, I personally, especially because the resolution is something that we are approving. You know, not approving like to go to City Council, but we are approving. I feel as though we might ask for the possibility of being able to see that prior.
Could we, could we just surmise that if we don't approve the resolution and we don't approve the ordinance, it'll still go to the City Council without our approval and they have our comments. And then they could make whatever alterations if, if they so desire, they, they wish to make. Uh, so our approval, uh, I don't think is, is necessary. What, what I'm looking at here is a, a document that I, I don't know any way else to put it, it's a draft document that, uh, I don't think any of us are happy with approving, so why don't we disapprove? Uh, and send it to the City Council with our comments and let them add, subtract, revise as they see fit. Wha- what say you?
What does that mean procedurally if we disapprove the resolution? Is the City Council going to be able to fully act on everything that they need to act on in their time?
We're, we're not a prerequisite to their approval. We don't need to prove before they can approve, they can approve regardless, whatever we do.
Well, well, the ordinance, we're not approving, we're recommending yay or, you know, yes or no.
Of course, of course. But I think in draft form and it, and it needs work. And I think we all are of that, of that opinion, and so, uh, we choose to not approve uh, or not recommend, uh, without the changes that were stated during this planning commission meeting.
Well, if, if I, if I may add, Commissioner, and I'll, I'll look to the city attorney on the procedural aspect of this, I, you know, I, I heard a lot of comments, uh, tonight, a lot of good constructive feedback. And frankly, given what I've heard, I don't think there's anything you've provided that really puts us at odds with SB nine or SB thirty five, there may be a couple of things that frankly will tell you we can't do because it's in violation of that. But it's really a timing thing, we, we've got to get this done before the end of the year. Um, to the extent that we can roll these suggestions into what gets to council and modify it, then that's, that's certainly what our intent is to work with city attorney to do. Um, I think, I think your recommendations would, would mean a lot to the City Council. And, you know, we've documented what your suggestions are, and again, I, I haven't heard anything that puts us at odds with either of those two SB nine or SB thirty five.
Alex, here's the thing. Do they need, and they being the City Council, need our recommendation to do whatever they're going to do? Yes or no?
I don't know. Steve, I don't know if you could.
The resolution is for, is recommending this, that the City Council approve the design standards. It's not a final approval of the standards, the City Council can make changes to the design standards at the upcoming meetings. Subject or, or based on comments that have been brought up tonight. I, I think it's a timing issue, I don't think there's another opportunity for the Planning Commission to consider these standards, we're gonna, you know, bring them, and I think the plan is to bring them back at a future date after we've gotten them enacted and adopted. Um, and then we can revisit them and refine them in the future, uh, but I think the, the proper course right now would be to send us to the City Council with your recommendations. Uh, and allow the City Council to consider those items that have been discussed today.
Okay, but, but the question is, the question is, if we do not do that, they still can act in December, correct? To approve it.
I mean, well, I think that if we, if we don't, I'm not clear on this, but it seems that if we do not approve like what we've done tonight, then will our comments still move forward or?
Of course they will, of course they will.
Howard, Commissioner, Vice Chair Brody, I'm not asking you, I, I apologize for my, my, but I'm not, I'm not asking you, I'm asking the city attorney and, you know, I mean, again, procedurally, I, you know, like, I, I, I guess what it, I don't have a problem with moving the ordinance forward to City Council. My concern was more the resolution because if I have seen it correctly, that is a document that is being signed by Planning Commission as in me. And I get that it can be revised shortly thereafter, it's just, you know, I want to be able to see the document that I'm going to sign and I don't, and I don't know if that has to happen before it goes to City Council. And if it does, then I am requesting that there's some formality where we review that document.
So what, what the government code requires is that you provide a recommendation, there'd be a recommendation of the Planning Commission that goes to the City Council. So that's government code section six, five, eight, five, seven.
Okay.
And then the City Council can, uh, approve, modify, modify or disapprove whatever that recommendation is, but I believe you have to have some recommendation that you're sending to the City Council.
Right, but could we recommend that they review our comments?
That, that could be part of the resolution, and I think what I was going to suggest is that, given there've been, there, there've been so many comments and suggestions that when the resolution and the ordinance, you know, when you take those up for, for a vote, that you include, you can include certain specific comments that have been raised tonight, or you can ask generally that the City Council consider the comments that have been raised and that, uh, I know that Director Hamilton has been, writing those down as we've gone along, and I've, I've written down several myself, and those would go to the council as part of the recommendation.
So could our recommendation be that the council consider modifying the ordinance and the objective standards as they were presented to us based on our comments and then, um, consider them for approval?
You know, I checked in that.
Well, that, that, that is something I think you can do under, under the government code, that would be part, is that part of your recommendation, and I think you can make that as part of the motion and then that would go to the City Council.
Do it, John.
So was that a motion and a second?
It wasn't a motion on my part, but I mean, I think I could convert it to a motion. Um, so I'll move that we, uh, make a recommendation to the City Council, um, to approve a modified version of the ordinance and objective design standards as they were presented to us based or after consideration of our comments and recommendations.
I'll second that.
Can we have roll call, please?
Yes, uh, Commissioner Chair Boyle.
Uh, yes.
Commissioner Vice Chair Brody.
Yes.
Commissioner Dustin.
Yes.
Commissioner Wright.
Yes.
Commissioner Alternate Okazaki.
Yes, also.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, and, uh, even though we, the commissioner had, we, the commission still has one agenda item to go over, but to all the public that was here listening in, assuming that you're now gonna skedaddle and enjoy your evening, thank you all for attending and uh, being a part of this. Um, and with that, I guess we should move on to agenda item three. Can we have, can we have the staff report? If you're ready.
Yes, a, a brief, uh, report on, uh, the appeal of determination of a tree removal permit at eight oh four Oxford. Um, this item, uh, was before you on October twenty seventh. Um, there was a, a lot of discussion and cons- and concern about, um, um, especially when the, uh, applicant admitted that one of the three trees that they were appealing had been removed. Um, and at the Planning Commission, and there was concern about the overall condition of the site and what the intent of the, uh, the property owner is going forward. Um, on the eighth of November, I received an email request from the owner's representative to withdraw the appeal to allow them time to develop a planting plan. Um, so that would be the recommendation tonight to accept the, um, withdrawal request dated, uh, November nine, uh, twenty twenty one from Cheryl Fields, the applicant's representative. Um, we'll certainly update the Planning Commission, uh, as more information is available, uh, in the future. Uh, staff, uh, is looking into this and, uh, we're going to meet with, uh, the applicant's arborist to, uh, get a better assessment of what's going on. Um, just kind of as an aside here, so that is our recommendation, but I would add uh, separate and apart from that, what we're seeing with the tree removal permit application process, it seems to be working well administratively, but what we're, what we're not seeing going forward is, uh, what people are intending on doing, what, what precipitates the request to begin with. A lot, sometimes it's just, we, we need to get that tree out, it's diseased, it's dying, it's a hazard. But a lot of times, there's some future plans by way of an addition, new construction. So we're trying to make some changes to the application to make sure that we pull that information out to the extent that we can. But in this case, the request is to accept the, uh, the applicant's request to withdraw this application and, or the appeal.
Uh, Commissioners, are there any questions for staff at this point? And, uh, I would normally open it up to the applicant, but they do not seem to be. If I remember correctly, the applicant or the applicant's representative is not here, so. I, I don't know if we need to have a discussion or if there's just a motion on the table.
I'll move to accept the withdrawal request for the appeal of the tree removal permit at eight oh four Oxford Road.
And can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, uh, Commissioner Chair Boyle.
Uh, I, yes.
Yes, Commissioner Vice Chair Brody.
Yes.
Commissioner Chair, uh, Dustin.
Yes.
Commissioner Chair Wright.
Yes.
And Commissioner Chair Alternate Okazaki.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, I think.
Can I make a real quick public service announcement?
Yes.
If, uh, if you're interested at ten twenty one tonight and you have a view of the southeastern sky, there's going to be a Falcon nine rocket taking off from Vandenberg Air Force Base, uh, if it's clear, you might be able to see it.
Oh, wow, thank you.
He says southeastern sky?
Yeah.
Southeast.
Southeast, okay.
Yeah. I do not have that view, but thanks anyway. Um, I, I guess with that, we can end the meeting, I just beforehand, I just want to wish you all a wonderful Thanksgiving and holiday season. Since I know we will not be seeing each other until, uh, twenty twenty two, unless we happen to run into each other at a Ralph's or something like that. Um, so I wish you all a very happy holiday and, uh, thank you for the last year as my colleagues and getting through this with, uh, Zoom and everything and I just, uh, yeah, I'm just really appreciative and grateful for you guys. Thanks.
Thank you, same to you.
Okay, happy holidays.
Thank you.
And I guess with that, it's adjourned.
We're out of here, see you next year.
Bye.